Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the December meeting of Leeds City Council Executive Board. I'll start by reminding everybody that this meeting is webcast live and welcome anybody who is watching online. So I will turn to the formal items at the top of the agenda. Are there any appeals against refusal of inspection of documents, please?
Thanks, Chair. To confirm, no appeals have been received for today's meeting.
Thank you. On the second item, is there any exempt information, please?
Yes, Chair. Appendix 1 and 2 to Item 9, which is delivery of East of Otley relief road and housing allocation, and Appendix 2 to Item 12, which is proposals to expand Bloomfield South Silk, are designated as being exempt from publication under Access to Information Procedure Rule 10.43, and should the board be agreeable, it be considered in private the conclusion of the public part of the meeting.
Thank you. Take it, everybody is happy with that. That's great. We'll move on to Item 3. Are there any late items, please?
Thanks, Chair. No formal late items of business, however supplementary information has been provided to the board and published in the form of some additional text within paragraph 2.6.3 of Item 10, Active Leeds' Vision for Wellbeing Centres. As due to a technical issue, this text did not pull through to the agenda as originally published.
Thank you. Item 4, I'm going to turn to the board and see if there's any declarations of interest. Nope. Turn to Item 5, which is the minutes of the meeting in November. Is everybody happy with those minutes? Thank you. I take it everybody is. Before I move on to Item 6, I'm just going to ask the councillor prior to comment on an ongoing matter.
Thank you, Leader. So four Leeds City Council officers have been arrested and bailed as part of a West Yorkshire Police investigation, where a total of nine arrests have been made. The media has reported that these are within the planning department. The officers have not been charged by the police, they have been suspended from their duties. Relevant senior Leeds City Council officers are cooperating with West Yorkshire Police on the investigation, in particular providing information requested to support the investigation, which could take some time. We continue to provide services in line with robust governance procedures while the investigation continues. This is, of course, deeply disturbing, and we recognise that councillors and members of the public will be concerned too. And we're really keen to reassure the public that we are taking the police investigation with the utmost seriousness.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you, Leader, and thank you for the statement. I have been getting briefed on this issue, for which I'm grateful for being kept up to date. There are only two brief things I would like to say. First is, the most important thing is to protect the integrity of a police investigation and to make sure that none of us do or say anything that affects that, and to acknowledge at the same time that nobody's been charged with anything at this point. And so that process needs to run out. I think the one bit of reassurance I would like is that, within whichever departments are relevant, that there will be thorough investigation oversight of our processes, so that we can give that reassurance to the public at the appropriate times, that will be fully transparent, that we would bring in external parties if we need to, if that's appropriate, and that elected members of all sides will have the opportunity to have full oversight of those processes. Obviously, we don't know specifically what it is we will be looking into, but at the right time, we need to make sure that happens.
Thank you, Councillor Lam, and I would agree with both of those points. I shall move on to the papers on the agenda, and Item 6 is the first one, please, councillor Harland.
Thank you, Leader. This report details how Leeds has worked over the last 20 years to enhance the customer experience, including the introduction of one-stop centres, community hubs, and investment in the telephony system. This paper outlines the next stage of that investment. The proposed new customer strategy aims to enhance customer engagement by understanding their needs and designing services around them. The report identifies key challenges and outlines how these will be addressed and mitigated. Key themes within the strategy include increasing customer choice, improving services based on feedback, and developing integrated and person-centred services. The strategy focuses on digital and data with a customer-first culture. The aim is that by offering more user-friendly digital self-service options, customers can access and manage services at their convenience whilst also reducing cost to the council. The report states that a detailed investor-save business case will come to Exec Board in spring of next year for approval to deliver a three-and-a-half-year programme of transformation. Whilst a lot of work has already been done, this really feels like a new start to this really ambitious and transformative project. It's a really positive report, and I'm also pleased to see that scrutiny will have ongoing oversight of the process going forward. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yep, thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Harland. I've got mixed views on this paper. It is absolutely right that we should be pursuing technology, digital, all of those opportunities, A, because it's potentially much more efficient to the council and the taxpayers, and B, because for a lot of our residents, that is how they want to access the council and how they want to access their services. The couple of areas where I perhaps have an issue, first of all, you may say this is flippant, perhaps I think it's fundamental, I have an objection to calling our fellow residents customers, because it implies they have a choice of going somewhere else if they don't like the service they're getting. And of course, the only way they can exercise that choice is to leave the city and go somewhere else, which is not what we're offering them. So that's one point. The second bit is making sure that within all of this, we recognise and acknowledge that for different people, and it's not just, I know plenty of older people who love the digital world and thoroughly embrace it, and plenty of young people who are total technophobes. But we have a diverse city and a diverse population, and digital is not for everyone, and it never will be. And even for those of us, the kind of technology my son accesses is a world where I have no idea about it, and I am reasonably proficient. But for a lot of older people, being expected to rely on digital, on the internet, is not realistic. And then the reassurances I'm looking for is that where we have a very geographically large city, very disparate and distinct communities, that people are not then excluded, because the only way they can access an in-person service is miles and miles and two or three bus journeys from their home. And that's the balance we have to strike with this, that yes, it's right, we should be using the technology to save money, to provide a better service overall to what I would call our fellow residents, not customers, but we have to make sure that where people want and need to access their services in person, they want to talk to someone either on the phone or in person, they have realistic opportunities to do that.
Thank you. James, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'll respond to both those points, and Lee may want to add some further detail. I think in terms of the first one, I think it's just important to say that, I think it's important that we call people within the city the appropriate term, dependent upon how we're engaging with them and how we're working with them. So we call people resident, service users, customers, in all different terms. The reason why I think we've just developed the word customer for this strategy is just to sort of emphasise the nature of how we want them to feel in terms of the level of customer service that they receive when they're accessing the council. But that's not going to be the term that we generally will use for people within the city, because we use all sorts of different terms at different times. I think the other important thing to stress is that we've purposefully developed the strategy to say this is about focusing upon what the customer wants. We know that a lot of customers want to do things digitally, and they can. So this agenda is about enabling those digital channels, so those people who want to can choose to do that, but not taking away the channels of face-to-face or telephone contact, they will still be there for those people that want to use them.
Thank you. Lee, please.
Thank you, Chair. The only bit I was going to add was we've got, the paper proposes an engagement approach, so certainly that's internal and external, so we would certainly be looking, because I very much take the point made about, you know, some people don't engage with digital for a whole range of reasons, so we would be looking to work with the older people's forum and organise the equality assemblies, etc., to make sure that we design this in the best way possible. And as James said, it's more digital first than digital by default, because we do know a lot of people want to engage with us digitally, but not everybody, so we need to make sure that everybody can still access services.
Thank you, Lee. If there's no more comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page 21, and I take it everybody is happy with those. That's great. Thank you, and we'll move on to councillor Afik's papers on Item 7, please.
Thank you, Leader. This report provides an update on the national policy and legislation for waste management known as Simple Recycling. The report details Leeds' progress in meeting strategic requirements, including whether the council is already in line with the national policy, and also plans for areas which the council is not currently meeting to ensure policy compliance by March 2026, which is the deadline. The report sets out and seeks approval for the three-bin approach released for curbside collections of household waste in Leeds. This approach will see the addition of food waste to the brown bins, resulting in all-year collection and further rollout of brown bins across the city. Alongside the lack for residual waste and green bins for recyclables now, including glass, I'm pleased to say that after a recent addition of glass and jars into the green bins, the recycling rates of these materials have increased from 42% to 69% since 1st of August. Finally, the report also updates and asks Exec Board to note the current performance of the refuse service and the actions taken to mitigate challenges in delivering the second-largest household collection service in the UK. I'll stop there and be happy to take any questions or comments, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you. Apologies in advance, I've got a few questions on this one, so thank you very much. So what is the current timeline for everyone getting a brown bin, especially on new estates? Because there's a lot of new estates that are still waiting for those. Where are we going to get the resource to crew the all-year-round brown bin collections proposed? And what is the plan? Because my understanding is, we don't know what level of funding the government are going to give, and they've indicated they will give some, but we don't know what it is. So if we don't get what we think we need, what then is the plan? And then my final point is that we've got, we've been waiting since 2019 for the route review to be rolled out, and we're now in 2024 and still waiting. What confidence can we have that this can be delivered in time, given the experience of that? And I do have another set of questions after that, Chair, please.
Thank you. That's a good break. John James, would you like to make a start on those questions, please? John, please.
Thank you, Leader. Thank you, councillor Lam. I'll try and work through, I think there's four questions there, but obviously correct me if I don't cover them all, please. Taking them in order, when will the brown bin service be rolled out citywide, and certainly to the next tranche of people, which would be new builds, as we call them, developments that have missed out from the last time that brown bins was redesigned? The intention will be to prioritise rolling out to those new builds first. So should the timetable for the addition of food waste into the brown bin not be able to be delivered by April next year, then we would prioritise, first of all, making sure that those that are currently not getting a brown bin for garden waste only get that, and we're looking at resourcing that through a new builds route for those households. However, when the expansion of the brown bin service to include food waste happens at some point in 2025, that will, the plan will be to expand that to a further up to 70,000 households, so that 290,000 households across the city would have access to a brown bin, if they wish to have one, that they can choose to use for garden waste and/or food waste, again, their choice. We are reluctant to commit 20 timescales at the moment, because I can't, but what the paper asks for is approval for that to be delegated to us and through James Rogers to look at concluding the procurement that would be necessary to do that. So we'd start a procurement process in terms of getting a contractor to deliver, to collect, to process the food and garden waste that we've collected, and the timescales would be determined largely by that procurement process. But our aim is to get that underway within 2025, and in time for, certainly to aim to get it in time for, to be able to, for people to have that certainty for next year, that it'll become all-year-round from next year. But obviously, we'll announce that on the conclusion of our work to do that. Where are we paying for it from, this initial phase, in terms of the rollout of food waste into the brown bin, based on the current infrastructure as to the two-weekly collection, is essentially self-financing, so the modelling we've done indicates the savings that we'd make from not taking that food waste to the energy recovery facility, where we pay a larger sum to dispose out the waste than we would do if we took it to a contractor to process it as mixed food and garden waste. So the savings in the disposal will offset the cost of expanding the service in the way that we've described. Indeed, we anticipate, and it's in the report, that there should be some savings to be made overall. Those savings include the savings we anticipate making by purchasing vehicles from the food waste, capital monies that DEFRA have provided for us, and offsetting vehicles that we're currently hiring, and making a saving there as well. So that contributes towards the overall saving that's in the report. What if we don't get what we need from government for the future? As things currently stand, the government have restated recently their intention to provide some transitional monies from this financial year, and have told councils to expect notification early in next calendar year of what that will be, and then that transitional money will be able to be rolled over, we understand it, into next financial year. They again have reaffirmed their commitment to fund, as a new burden, the cost of collecting food waste from 2026 to 27, and have indicated that we will be notified, all councils will be notified of that at a later date. So we don't know how much, and we don't know exactly when, and that's covered in the report in terms of the proposals and the risk. Obviously, how long is a piece of string in terms of what we do? It depends how much we, when we are notified, how much we get, and therefore what we think we can do with that in terms of meeting the requirements to move to a weekly collection, whichever point that becomes affordable. So that's how I'd probably answer that, is we'll know when we know. If we obviously don't get, if the shortfall is significant, and we can't afford to do it, then we can't afford to do it, and we'll have to review that at the time and continue to discuss with DEFRA what we're currently doing at that time. That's one of the reasons we're proposing, what we're proposing is not to stand still for now, to put forward a proposal that enable up to 80% of the city to access the ability to process food waste, again, if they wish to, and start to change people's habits and behaviours, and get them used to actually processing and managing recycled food waste. We think that's the best thing to do, to get things going, rather than wait further for government to confirm funding, but clearly we'll review that when that happens. Route review, we've started the route review, implementing it in terms of the first phase that we introduced earlier this year to roll out alternate week collections to 10,000 more properties in the city. We're just finalising the implementation of the next phase of the route review, which will be to roll out to another potentially 40,000 properties that still remain on four weekly green bin collections, to move them to a combination of fortnightly collections, and we're planning for half of those properties to be moved to weekly recycling collections from early next year. So that would complete the main phases of the route review that deal with moving properties that currently have a less frequent recycling collection to at least parity with the rest of the city, and in some cases, a more frequent collection. Then we'll move on to the next phase of the review, which is the remainder of the city to redesign all the other routes. We'd like to get that completed as soon as we can, next year, and we would aim to try and get that completed so it at least coincides with the introduction of garden waste, food waste collections as part of the brown bin, because that will have an effect on the tonnages that the routes will have. If we introduce, if we do introduce food waste to the garden bin, then that will clearly take food waste out of the black bin and impact on the route designs, as well as the success the councillor Afik's referred to of the glass in the green bin, as well affecting tonnages. So we need to take stock of that and make sure that they're factored into the route review, which, like I say, we intend to complete next year.
Thanks, John. Councillor Lam.
Yeah, thank you for those responses. I think my point on the last one was, what confidence can we have going forward? My recollection is, we started on the route review process in 2019 with the intention of implementing it the following year. Granted, I'll give you that Covid significantly got in the way and changed the landscape, but we're still, our record of delivering big changes to the refuse service on time is not great historically, so what's the confidence that we have? Appreciate the uncertainties you've mentioned that the government have left us with. So I'll let you come back on that and have one final.
Yeah, I'll pick that one up just to provide that reassurance. I think councillor Lam asked the right question, because it has been a number of years that we've been doing the route review, and as you rightly say, we had Covid and the impact, but we've also had significantly the national waste strategy developments, which have been uncertain for some years now. And now we've got some clarity on those, and those are coming through. Even though we still get outstanding questions around funding and things of that nature, we are getting to the position where I think we can be pretty confident that we can complete that route review, knowing what routes we're going to be providing, looking into the future in terms of what waste we're collecting and what manner.
Thank you. Do you say I had one more question, councillor Lam?
Yes, thank you, specifically to councillor Afik. So back at July's Exec Board, councillor Afik, we had a discussion about waste collection and reporting, and the figure that you gave us was 99.81% of bins were collected on time. And the point I was making was that it seems wrong to me that if we miss it on the day, we don't count, we count it as collected on time if it's within 48 hours, and that's how those figures are made up. And nobody contradicted me at that point. But having reflected back and watched what I said and what you said at the meeting, I think I may have misunderstood what you were telling me and what I thought you'd committed to. So I'd be grateful if you could just explain what counts as a missed bin in that 99.81% figure, please.
Thank you. Obviously, I assume councillor Afik hasn't watched back the July Exec Board meeting as well.
That's a pretty basic question.
Well, yes, yeah. No, but come in, councillor Afik.
I'll come in and I'll pass on to John and go into more details. What we report, or what's required to report, is quite historical. In Leeds, it goes back to 2001, and what's required by law is what we do. We're not different to any of the local authority. In fact, our end-of-day reports are quite comprehensive compared to many other local authorities. They've improved massively due to, you know, scrutiny input as well over the years. With regards to actual, what's included in those, you know, 0.5%, which is missed, John perhaps will go into more detail and provide you an answer.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I may, I think it's really important that we know that the executive board member responds for it. I'll hold my hands and say, I've misunderstood how these figures have been compiled and what they mean for years and years, but I'm not responsible for the refuse service. It's a very simple question that the executive member should be able to answer. What counts as a missed bin in the figures?
I've just explained to you that, you know, it's quite complex. What actually is reported is what, at the end of the day, after 5pm, and this is actually how it's done nationally, the customers report to us, through the system, online system, and that's actually how it's recorded. Obviously, a lot of it is captured by our own crews, which is on the end-of-day report as well. Occasionally, we get the reports from elected members as well, but that's how, you know, basically what's reported is what's reported by customers, you know, Leeds residents, when they contact us, and that is actually how everybody records it. We're not any different to anybody else, unless, you know, let me put that clear to you, councillor Lam. We're not reinventing the wheel here, okay? But I'll ask John to kind of go into more detail.
Thank you. James, would you like to come in, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Over the years, I've been involved in many discussions about this performance indicator. And as councillor Afik says, it was first developed as part of the National Suite in 2001, and we've been using that indicator to measure performance in refuse since that time, because that's been, well, was until recent years, reported nationally in terms of comparing all local authorities. And my understanding is that most local authorities continue to monitor it in the same way, which is the number of residents who contact us to report their missed bins. The question is, I suppose councillor Lam, I think, is posing is, why, for example, doesn't it include the end-of-day reports that we do, which is a specific report that we produce in Leeds? I suspect most authorities don't do similar in terms of giving that level of information to all members. And the reason why we don't add in that into the figures is quite straightforward, is because you start getting into double counting, in terms of a resident may have reported something, a chargeant may have reported something in terms of a miscollection, and therefore what we always acknowledge is that the performance indicator and the end-of-day reports are proxies in terms of where we are in terms of bin performance. We're never going to say they are 100% accurate, because I think it's impossible to measure the nature and complexity of that particular service in a way that would be 100%. But I think we can be pretty confident, bearing in mind that that performance indicator has been in place in 2001, that it's a good, solid performance measure to use to give you an indication of where you are in terms of performance.
Thank you. Councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you. Well, that's my new understanding of how the performance indicator works, and it's notable that officers had to come to the rescue of the executive member who clearly doesn't understand it. That, well, no, what you said, councillor Afik, you implied that the end-of-day reports were included. So what, yes, well, what we now know is that the only, these figures are woefully inaccurate, and you regularly use them as a defence when challenged, about the performance of the refuse service, to say, you're talking rubbish, pun intended, 99.81% of our bins are collected on time. That is not what that indicator is saying. That indicator is about one person reporting. So I know, for example, I have dozens of streets that are missed regularly. I can think of Mr Shaw on Low Way in Bramham, who regularly, probably 12 times, I checked in my emails in the past 12 months, have had their bins missed. All his neighbours let him know, and he lets me know, because they've got fed up of reporting it. I alert the service, and hopefully at some point they come and collect the bins. Not once have those misses been included in the figures. And the danger is not double counting, the danger here is, we're rarely counting any of the misses, we're hardly counting any of them, relying on a resident to report. If one resident in a street reports a missed bin, we just take that as one missed bin. We don't consider that the whole street has likely been missed and count those bins. When a member reports, that's not included in the figures when it's on the end-of-day report. So we know they've been missed, but we don't count them. It's a nonsense. So the commitment I would like from you, councillor Afik, is that we will actually make an attempt to measure this properly, so we can understand properly the performance of the refuse service.
Thank you. Councillor Afik, please.
Yeah, councillor Lam, as I've reiterated already to you, that we're not going to reinvent the wheel, we're not any different for any other local authorities, so you could make what you want out of it. What we do do is, with all those bins which are on the end-of-day report, crews have actually attempted to collect those. You know, there's nothing you can do if they can't get into a street because of obstruction, if there's any roadworks, you know, if there are any logistical reasons. You know, occasionally we have vehicle breakdowns, for instance, it might be over presentation. There's nothing we could do about that, no, you know, other crew anywhere in the country could do about that. So give some credit to those crews. Don't be cruel to the way that when they go out in adverse weather conditions, make everything, make every attempt to collect their bins. You're trying to say that, well, why are they still missed? I mean, that's what you're trying to do, that's all you're doing, you know, always, you know, go at that. You can have a go at me all day you want to, but what you're being, by saying that, you're being cruel, I think, you know, if I put it that way. Do all those crews work very hard? They are frontline service. You know, I'd say this with hand and heart, they make every effort to collect those bins every day. If they can't get to it, there's nothing, we collect them the next day, or the next day, 40, and we recover them. All the bins get recovered. Obviously, apart from those issues we had in the summer with the brown bins, which is a discretionary service, one of the largest in the country, but, you know, the compulsory, which is the black and green bins, are given every, no matter what. But, you know, the compulsory, which is the blackened green bins, are given every, no matter what. And they are collected 99% of the times within the 40-hour period. And that is very, it's not something we've done recently. We've done that for the last 25 years. When you had the, you know, your coalition had, we did the same thing. We've done that and it's much better than we did before, both in terms of the end-of-day report and also our collection rates as well. Despite more cars, more, you know, traffic on our streets, despite more additional challenges, despite more households, we actually do really well. And, you know, give some credit to you where it's really due councillor Lam.
Thank you councillor Afik. councillor Lam, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't intend to come back, but that was a total misrepresentation of what I said. My criticism is of you councillor Afik and your service. I did not level any criticism at the refuse crews whatsoever. The point, the point I'm making, so you've had your chance to speak and I'm sure you can come back if you want to. The point I'm making is we're not measuring, we don't know how many bins are being collected. I wasn't criticizing the efforts of the crew. The point I'm making is you don't know how many bins are missed every day and you're not presenting that information to the council and to members of the public. So we can't accurately measure the performance because we don't have the numbers. We simply don't have it. And that's a criticism of you and you alone councillor Afik and your political leadership. I don't think you understood this until now. And so my criticism is firmly and squarely at you. And I would like you to address the point of my suggestion that we actually make an attempt to measure this properly. And then we can celebrate the successes where they are and appropriately criticize when they're not. But this 99.81% figure is meaningless.
Councillor Afik, please.
Thank you, leader. I think we're going around in circles and you can say it where you want to. But having a go, you know, it's actually, you are effectively saying that the service isn't performing or it's doing something. We're not doing, no, no, we're not doing anything different to anybody else. So let's, let me make that clear councillor Lam. We're not doing anything different to anybody else. We, what's not, what's not collected on the day is majority of it, apart from maybe an odd street, which is not recorded by crews, it's actually on the day report. We know where we are at the end-of-each-day report and it gets collected the next day. There's nothing you can do if there's an obstruction, if you can't get into a street. You know, if you want to go and spend half a day, I'll come with you with the crews, you'll see the challenges they are presented with. So if you're saying that why those streets at the end-of-day report are on that report and why they're not collected, then, I mean, you can make your own mind, you can go around in circles, but, I mean, I can't, I can't really answer that for you because it's actually crystal clear the reasons why they are. And they are, they're not due to our fault, the services' fault, the crews' fault. These are logistical reasons, are difficult reasons, which are sometimes, we've made efforts in terms of having traffic regulation orders on cul-de-sacs, on end-of-streets. We've done all that and it has improved the service, but there are other things we can't do. Some of our streets aren't designed for, you know, the volume of traffic we have for lorries. And so we actually, if you look at every end-of-day report, 80% of the missed collections are due to obstructions. Yeah. And there's not, you know, much we can do. If you're going to go around in circles and say, well, why it's on that, all that missed, that is not because of our fault. And that is, 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 is crystal clear. I can't be more clear than that councillor Lam. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. James, please.
Yeah, thank you, leader. Just to add to what councillor Afik said around setting some of the context. So we are the second largest refuse collection service in the country. We collect half a million bins every week. We do two things in terms of performance monitoring. One is the performance statistic that has been referred to, that we've been using now for 23 years and is used by all local authorities. As I've said, it's not perfect, but it's an indicator of what we do. And then we have the end-of-day report, which most authorities don't do in a similar way. And in fact, I would challenge anyone to identify any service that at the end of the day provides that level of performance information to elected members in terms of what's been done in that particular day. If you then look at what's on that end-of-day report, which is usually, and we have exceptions during the report, which is usually a handful of missed streets that have been missed for the sorts of reasons that councillor Afik has identified. And if you look at that list in the context of a half a million bins that are collected a week, I would stand by the fact that the performance is really, really good by the service overall.
Thank you. Is it a new point councillor Lam? Because I feel we've been going around a number of bits at quite a few times.
No, I'd like to have one more go at getting councillor Afik to actually address the actual points that I've been making because he's doing a manful job of deflecting it into something else. The point I'm making is, how do you know? You said 80% of bins collected are for obstructions. How do you know? And 80% of what? What evidence are you referring to? My point is, nothing to do with performance. My point is about recording. We don't know how many bins are missed. You don't keep that figure. That's the point.
Councillor Afik, I do think we are going around the same part, but I'll let councillor Afik have another go at trying to help councillor Lam out here.
I'll have a one, I'll have another attempt. And do you actually, I see, you know, the end-of-day reports, I see them every day. Yeah. If you open up the end-of-report, you as ward members, you only get the copy of that report if it's, if something's missing in your ward. If nothing's missing in your ward, you won't get the end-of-day report. I get them all, all the time. I'm happy to sit with you and show you, you know, let's say over the course of a week, if you want to, or with John or James. And I will show you, it gives you the reasons for each street, the reason it's missed. And if you see, if you count roughly, I mean, I didn't say, when I say 80%, it's approximate. It might be 70% one day, it might be 85%. This is just a kind of an approximate figure. So don't take things out of context. So if you look, the majority of the reasons for misses are obstructions. There are other logistical reasons which beyond our control, that's what I'm saying. Like James has said, we collect half a million bins every week, about 83,000 bins a day. You know, if you look at the few hundred which are, it might be 200 or 500 on, in total, if you look at the streets and count the households, it's still, it's a very, very low percentage, which again are collected on the following day and last month, if not within 48 hours. That's all we can do. We can't do any more than that. Yeah. No matter who's actually, whether it's me or John, anybody else leading the service, these are logistical reasons which crews work very hard every day to go out and make the best out of it.
Thank you. I think we've given that a good airing. I think we've given it a good airing and I think it was a very kind, very kind offer to take you through to more details of that councillor Lam. I mean, I'm sure you'll take up that offer. So if there's nothing else to add, I'm going to just open the papers again on my laptop. If there's nothing else anybody wants to add to this report, I don't think there is. I'll see whether we are happy with the recommendations that are on page 37 and on to third page 38. councillor Lam, please.
I'd like to record that I've reserved my position on that one.
Okay. We'll note that. I take it everybody else is happy with the paper. That's great. Thank you. And we'll move on to item eight, please councillor Afik.
This is the confirmation decision to introduce district parking charges. The proposal to introduce modest car parking charges in a number of district car parks of coastal city was included as part of 2024-25 budget-setting process, which included wilderness and station gardens in Wetherby, Barley Hill Road in Garth, Twinkle in Horstworth, Netherfield Road in Geisley and Marsh Street, Rothwell. The proposal forms a critical part of our budgetary objectives with financial implications totaling £414,000 for 2025-26 financial year. The proposal has been subject to extensive consultation, which has resulted in amendments to the pricing proposals following feedback from residents and local businesses. This includes three hours at each of the sites and three free hours at station gardens in Wetherby. Alternative proposals were also considered for Wetherby and Horstworth, which were not viable. A delicate decision to proceed to implementation was taken by the chief officer on 12th November 2024. That decision was subject to a call-in and it was therefore considered by the Housing, Environment and Communities Scrutiny Board on 21st November 2024. At this meeting, it was recommended the decision was to be considered by the decision-makers, specifically in relation to displacement parking, economic impact, consultation and equality of access. We have considered the points raised by scrutiny board and these responses are detailed in this report. If the proposals are not progressed, this would place a further pressure on next year's budget mounting to £414,000. So while it's accepted that the decision is unpopular, it remains necessary, urgent that the regional delegate decision, as detailed in recommendations, is confirmed by executive board today, given the unprecedented financial challenges we are facing, which are detailed elsewhere on today's agenda. Both officers and I remain committed to working collaboratively and flexibly with local ward members and residents to implement this decision locally. I'm happy to stop there, leader, and take on any comments and questions.
Thank you. councillor Lam.
Thank you, Chair. This is only the second time I can remember in my time on council where a decision has been sent back to executive board to think again. And the reason it happens so rarely is the administration have the majority on every scrutiny board. And so the only reason this is back here because even Labour members of council think this is a mistake and you should think again, along with every other political party. In the case of my ward, 97% of over 6,000 people that responded to the council thought this was a bad idea and set out a whole array of reasons why this would have a devastating impact on individuals, on the community, on the streets around, by displaced parking, on businesses, and actually on the council's finances in potential lost rents, lost business rates, increased social isolation and a whole variety of other things. People across the city think this is a bad idea. We are here to represent our residents. And if we're not going to listen to consultation responses that are reaching levels of 97% and take action, then what is the point of consulting with anybody about anything? I have a few questions that I'm hoping officers can answer. I think based on the information that's here and based on the answers we're about to hear, that it would be unlawful to make this decision in this place. And I'm evidencing that by the Supreme Court judgment against Haringey Council, who were taken to court by a local community around implementing parking charges because they didn't consult, they didn't respond properly to the consultation and because they didn't undertake proper impact assessments. None of those things have been done here. So I would caution every single member of this board that my view is if you approve this, you are going to be acting unlawfully and exposing this council to a significant amount of risk. And I would like that to be captured in the minutes in the event that that does go forward. So my first questions are around the impact assessment. So if officers could please tell me what formal impact assessments have been done around the impact on businesses in each of the five communities, the impact on the surrounding streets in terms of displaced parking. I know provision's been put in for potential TROs, but that's provision in case something happens. What impact assessments have been done to tell us what we expect the impact to be and what assessment has been done on what the impact on the council's finances will be in terms of other departments such as collecting rents from properties that we own and the landlords for and from business rates. And the final point I would make, if you can answer those and I'll come back.
Thank you. Who'd like to come in first, please?
Thank you, leader. Thank you councillor Lam. So in terms of the first question in relation to economic impact on businesses, as we've set out in the report, we are unable to provide a detailed economic impact. We don't have the data. We don't have the reliable data. And we're unable to undertake that level of economic impact assessment. And that's, and that's consistent with the approach to making these sorts of parking decisions up and down the country. We have done research. We have spoken to other authorities where similar charges have been introduced. And that's not the approach that is taken to our knowledge. It's simply because the data, we don't have the reliable data set and also there's a capacity issue given the urgency of the recommendations. In relation to the surrounding streets and the displacement, this is very much the next part of the process. So the recommendations are to proceed to statutory consultation. And as part of the consultation on the proposed TROs, we will be undertaking more detailed assessments and impacts. And that's, that's the natural phase and highways colleagues have advised accordingly in this report in relation to this matter. And in relation to assessment of impact on finances for the decision, once again, and this isn't something that we've undertaken previously, it's not something that's undertaken for these sorts of decisions. We will, of course, be monitoring the implementation and the impact of the decisions as we would with any policy decision. And as an authority, we'd take appropriate action if we need to. But no, no further assessment is proposed in that regard.
Thank you, Gayton.
Okay, thank you. So we know that in none of those three areas, an impact assessment has been done and we don't know the answer to what the impact is going to be. And that's one of the reasons why scrutiny sent it back here. The next point I would make is in the scrutiny inquiry, the chief highways officer confirmed that typically a traffic regulation order process takes six to 12 months. And in briefings with officers, they've told me that they would expect in this case, it will be the latter end of that, given the level of interest they expect to receive. So it would be at the earliest this time next year when you would expect to be able to implement this supposedly essential saving. So it should have formed part of budget savings this year and hasn't. And in theory, it should be forming part of budget savings for next year and won't because there isn't time to introduce it. So we will have got by for two years without this money. So you would then ask, if we've managed for two years, why can't we manage going forwards? Because my view and that of the thousands of people that have responded to consultation so far is this will have a hugely negative impact on the five communities affected, on businesses, on individuals and on the wider community. My final, final point is when this was first proposed to me just over a year ago, the offer I put to the officers first, then to the executive member and to the leader, was the right way to approach this was to sit down, in the case of my community, and I would say the same approach in all, to sit with ward members, to sit with the local town or parish council where that's appropriate, to sit with the local business community and residents, understand the challenge of the council and what they're trying to achieve and work together to come up with proposals. We all have issues that we would like to address. And this potentially, there could be a way to generate money for the council. I would argue we should be scrapping this decision and taking that approach. If we had done that when I suggested it a year ago, we could have been having money into the council pot already, meeting the financial challenge. This approach has failed so far. It will keep failing. I believe it will come under judicial review if the decision is taken and I believe we will be very vulnerable to losing that. And we will be no further on in meeting the financial challenge and all those communities will be under a cloud. So my proposal is we reject these proposals, sit down with those communities and work together properly to come forward with proposals that can help meet the council's financial situation but is absolutely in the best interests of all of those communities.
Thank you. I've noted those comments councillor Lam. Does anybody else want to come in on this item? I don't see anybody else wanting to come in, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations. I know your comments councillor Lam. I assume you're reserving your position.
I'm not, I'm absolutely opposed to this.
Okay. We note that. I take it everybody else is happy with the recommendations. That's great. Thank you councillor Afik. And we'll move on to item nine, please councillor Lennox.
Thank you very much. So this report provides an update on the East of Otley project, which was last reported to the executive board in February 2020. It sets out the positive progress made in addressing very challenging technical and financial matters through difficult economic circumstances for the development. financial matters through difficult economic circumstances for the development sector in the last few years and it asks the board to approve the next steps in being taken, to be taken in securing funding for further project development and delivery. This particularly focuses on the new East of Otley relief road that will unlock the development of the site. The development will ultimately provide new homes for local people with a significant proportion being affordable housing, new community infrastructure, employment opportunities as well as traffic relief and air quality improvements to the town centre of Otley. The East of Otley site has been allocated in the city's local plan for almost twenty years and has required significant collaboration between the council, landowners and developer interests to bring proposals forward. Executive board previously approved that the council enter into an agreement with Homes England, the government's housing and regeneration agency, to secure housing infrastructure funding to support upfront infrastructure costs associated with the scheme. This brought partners together and enabled the progression of feasibility and design work and the submission of a planning application in twenty twenty one. This is a complex site with many viability challenges related to ground conditions, topography and multiple land ownership interests. The timeframe for utilizing the agreed housing infrastructure funding has not been sufficient to resolve all of these issues or to enable the council to draw on the funding. However, there continues to be strong collaboration, collaboration between the council, developer interests and Homes England, meaning we're now in a position to take advantage of alternative funding through the Brownfield Infrastructure and Land Fund, which subject to our own and Homes England approvals, will give access to a greater amount of funding which will more directly address the challenges, the viability challenges and updated costs of this project. The work undertaken and the benefits that the Brownfield Infrastructure and Land Fund will bring mean that the project will have a greater delivery certainty, allowing the benefits set out within the report as documented within the local plan to be realised for Otley, importantly including affordable housing. The council welcomes the collaborative approach of key stakeholders on this project, Persimmon and Homes England, and the positive impact that they've had in driving it forward and creating a sound base for a new public engagement and consultation on this project when the planning process commences. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lam, please.
Yes, it's just a very brief comment, Chair, because I'm sure others around the table have received representations from members of the public about this. My view from what has been sent to me is that actually relates to the planning application, which is not at this stage. This is, and I think it's worth making the point, this is simply about switching from one funding pot to another, which makes sense and the issues that people have got around the planning application, they should be picked up in the normal way and I think it's just worth making that point.
Thank you councillor Lam.
Yeah, precisely. What we're doing here is, is we are taking advantage of a new, more certain funding direction for this that can then unlock this application again and go through that planning process for scrutiny with ward members, with the community, with members of plans panel.
Thank you. Are there any more comments on this paper? I take it they're not, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page one hundred and forty-six and I take it everybody's happy with those recommendations. Thank you councillor Lennox, on to item ten, please councillor Arif.
Thank you, Chair. So members will know that Active Leeds is a large, complex service, but just to set out some context, the service employs three hundred and sixty-five full-time equivalent staff working across seventeen leisure centres, fourteen gyms and twenty-two pools, as well as delivering health and wellbeing programmes commissioned by Sport England, NHS and public health. This is an exciting time for Active Leeds with a significant amount of investment and activity focused around wellbeing centres over the next three to five years, which complements our ever increase in focus around preventative measures and health and wellbeing, both physical and mental. This report sets out the updated position regarding the ongoing development and delivery of the vision for wellbeing centres in Active Leeds, the opportunities being delivered and developed for the Investorsave project and the challenges being faced around the council's financial challenge and the requirement to generate additional income and make savings and efficiencies where possible. Since the last Vision for Leisure report to exec board back in two thousand and sixteen, a great deal of work has been delivered, the improvements to Airborough Leisure Centre, including the community hub and library and several gym upgrades across the city, which have played a large part in increasing our membership numbers from around eighteen thousand in two thousand and eighteen to thirty-three thousand in twenty twenty-four, the highest membership figure ever achieved. The report identifies Investorsave pipeline projects, including the rebuild of Fainall Wellbeing Centre, Airborough Phase Two, John Charles Centre for Sport All-Weather Court Developments and the new learner pool at John Smeaton, as well as the new gym proposed as part of the George Street Hotel Development. The report celebrates the brilliant work delivered by Active Lifestyle's team, who deliver health and wellbeing programmes in local communities through public health, Sport England and NHS funded programmes. And before I finish, Chair, I'd just like to thank all the staff within the service. It's not uncommon for me to receive emails in my inbox from members of the public saying their staff has literally saved their life or gone above and beyond. So just a big thank you for, to all the staff members who work in the service. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Arif. Are there any comments on this paper? councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, there absolutely are, Chair, and I'm delighted to have something positive to talk about on the, on the agenda. Yes, well, thank you, thank you councillor Lewis. Yes, so my first request is really around all of the proposals and just to make sure that this is something that's being done with local members and communities and not to them. But the direction of travel is absolutely correct. Putting my parochial hat on, my first duty as a councillor is to represent the people of my hometown of Wetherby and the wider ward and many members will now have been pushing for a new leisure centre for, for Wetherby for quite a long time, along with a new high school and I have to again publicly thank councillor Prior and others for their support and work, really being happy to put politics aside and, and work together to deliver something important and we should see shovels in the ground of Wetherby High School's long awaited new build next year and that also creates the opportunity to have a new site for a leisure centre. And again, I thank councillor Arif for being willing to, to work with us and Jay Warren, who's been magnificent, I have to say, on this. So I'm very grateful to officers, very grateful to our local leisure centre staff as well for the amazing job they do in a building that needed replacing a long time ago, really, if we're being honest. But I'm absolutely delighted and obviously at your service to help with landing this and delivering it and we'll do everything possible locally to support and you know that we're ready to, to do that.
Thank you councillor Lam. Does anybody else want to come in on this item? No, that's great. On that positive note, I'll turn to the recommendations on page one hundred and sixty-seven and one hundred and sixty-eight and I take it everybody's happy with those? Great, so we're moving on to councillor Hayden's items and item eleven, please.
Thank you, leader. This, this first report, report outlines our ongoing efforts to improve educational health and care plans, known as EHCPs, and the process in Leeds. It sets out activities undertaken in the delivery phase of this work and positive changes in service delivery arrangements that are benefiting children with special educational needs and disabilities and their families. This continues to be a key area of focus for us in the context of a national recognition that the current send-off support system is broken and is financially unsustainable for local authorities. The challenges include increased demand and capacity constraints and the report recommends further improvements that prioritise children and families funded from savings within the directorate and future social care grants. The programme we have begun is ambitious. Multi-agency panels for assessment of need are now considering well over a hundred requests every week and an external provider is working at scale until the expected delivery timescales. Our staff are working incredibly hard to carry out further work to revise the operating model, improving processes, enhancing case management and delivering improved communication with families. This work will continue to be informed by the views and experiences of children, parents and carers, as well as schools and other specialist settings and will be underpinned by our principle of ensuring support is available for children and young people who need it most. And I just want to take this opportunity, like councillor Arif, my colleague here next to me, to thank our brilliant staff and the work that they're doing, the pace of change and just the sheer hard work that's going into improving things for some of the most vulnerable children and young people in our, in our city. So just really want to take that opportunity to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hayden. councillor Lam.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair, thank you for the introduction. I'm certain I'm not alone around this table in having a lot of residents coming to me with concerns about EHCPs, about SEND, about access to things for their children, about how long things are taking to get done. I've joined you on a number of occasions in criticizing the previous government for not addressing this issue. It saddens me, as I'm sure it does all of you around the table, that the new government has not made this a priority and it is not one of their missions other than identifying issues earlier. There is no plan or intention to come and solve the funding issue, so we have to figure out how to do it ourselves here. I note actually, Dan Barton and Gary Sell have inherited a very, very difficult and challenging position and, and in many ways have done a good job in terms of trying to get things on a better footing, but what's in this report is actually the situation is still getting worse, not better, if I've read it correctly. And the, there are more applications coming in each week than we are currently able to assess still. So there is a problem with demand and supply and we still don't have the capacity. So if, if I understand it correctly, we are further behind where we are, or where we were, where we set out to be and still going backwards. The reassurance I would like is a point I've made many times before, that while accepting this is a national challenge, and I'm sure that will come up in the responses, and there are things we need whichever government to do to step up and deal with the national issues, that can't be an excuse for not doing the things that we're in control of. And I think we're still falling short in that regard. Communication is a big issue, management and oversight of cases is a big issue. I don't doubt that the staff are doing a brilliant job in the circumstance that they have, but too often because someone's off sick or on holiday, that is then the excuse for why someone's, someone's EHCP is not moving forward. I've recently had a case where the position we're in now is not only could we not meet someone's EHCP on time, but when they not unreasonably complained about that to the council, the council's response was really sorry, we also don't have time to deal with your complaint on time. And that's the position we're in. So we, we have to, we have to do better is the, is the challenge on this. There are too many children and families and schools that need us to do better. There's an awful lot to do, a lot that we need the government to do. I, I think the report accurately sets out the scale of the challenge. It says we've got all the right intent, but we need to put our foot harder on the gas and find ways, different ways to approach this, to actually be able to see progress.
Thank you councillor Lam. Who would like to come back? Julie, please.
Thank you, thank you leader, thank you councillor Lam. I think the report actually does set out really clearly progress that has been made and I think, you know, none of us are under any illusions and we've been very clear about the task, you know, the scale of the task in hand. And I think it is important, as you highlighted councillor Lam, to put this in the context of a system which has been recognized nationally as, you know, as broken, but where there is an absolute commitment to working and addressing that nationally. You know, I suppose I just want to highlight some of the things that are in the report, which is progress, because I think it's really, really important that we ju, just take an opportunity to do that. So as an example, the fact that we do now have a multi-agency panel, which is meeting in the city to look at requests for assessments, you know, it is multi-agency, they are looking at over a hundred assessments per meeting in a really robust, detailed way. The feedback that we are having from key stakeholders in the city, from parents and carers, is that that is a really positive improvement. You know, another example where we've now got the digital application process up and running, which means that, again, education leaders in the city, parents, carers, you know, it's much easier for them to make the assessment application. Data that we are receiving, that we've now gathered improvements to data, so that we're really clear about real time data. I could go on, but the progress and the positive progress that has been achieved and is being achieved is set out clearly in the paper. Also really important to say that we're clear about the work that's still to be done and we're absolutely committed to that. The key thing and the most important thing here is there's a very clear, detailed plan that sets out how we're going to continue to make that improvement. The very fact that now we have currently got our external provider working through, you know, approximately a hundred assessments a month which have been out of time, you know, that's a positive improvement for children and families in the city, but we know there is a lot to do and that's why we still have a really clear detailed plan. And the fact that this report does set out, the fact that we do need that additional capacity, that additional resource, but importantly, significantly, that we have a commitment, you know, to ensure that that is identified and that that's put into place as a priority. I'll hand over to Dan because I think Dan wants to perhaps come in on just some of the, of the detail.
Thank you, Dan, please.
Thank you Julie, thank you Chair. I was just going to say a couple of things really. Firstly, that we absolutely agree that we, that the children and families' experiences in the city are not yet where we would all want them to be. The first point that you mentioned councillor Lam was around communication. We know that that has been an issue and we are prioritizing it because, ultimately because it's the right thing to do to provide the, the information to our children and to our families, but also because we know that from our analysis of complaints information, that a significant proportion of those are, are about communication. So addressing the communication issue not only is right for our families, but also will, will mean that we have more time to dedicate to the, to the work that we need to do. That's the next part of the plan. Julie referred to a comprehensive plan. Early next year, we are putting in place a solution which will mean that in an automated way, parents and carers can access information about where, where they are in the queue, which means that they won't have to have, have contact with a, with a real person to find that information out. That will help to reduce the burden on the service and to help them to focus on, on, on the work that they, that our families need them to do. It is a supply and demand issue, but we are seeing already the impact of, of the additional resource. So we've, of, of the original queue of, of assessments which were out of time, we've allocated now, although at the time of writing it was under half in, in real time, it's over half of those assessments have been allocated to our external partner and we've received over half of those back. So we are delivering what we said we did, we would do in terms of those milestones and we are, albeit that the timeliness is an issue, we are getting through those assessments now and I think that's really positive. We've also got eight more casework officers joining the team for the Sensap team in January. That will also help and so incrementally and gradually, we are in a very challenging situation continuing to, to, to improve. The impact of these changes will take time and I think we have to hold our nerve on it. We can't, we can't turn it around overnight and I'm grateful for your comments. We are continuing to, to press the pedal to the metal. Final thing I will say, just in relation to the Sensap team, is that, that is a team that really cares about getting it right for, for families and they have issued in the last year more than double the number of EHCPs than they did the previous year, just in terms of the impact of that challenge and that productivity increase, notwithstanding the challenge in terms of the demand and the pressures that the service are facing. But thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lam, please.
Yeah, thank you Chair, thank you for the responses. One, I've been following the process of this through scrutiny from my previous interest. I've kept, kept up to date with the discussions and one of the challenges they've made is around funding for inclusion and obviously the intention is to withdraw that. One of the challenges they've made is about the appropriate pace of that. And given where we're at here, are you and will you consider reviewing the pace of withdrawing the FFI funding? Scrutiny, I believe thinks you should be looking at something more in the region of six years to phase that out rather than the current proposals and I can certainly see a sense in that, given where we are.
Yeah, we're absolutely committed and I think it is set out clearly in the paper to an outside timescale of seven years, you know, but as with all of these improvements, where we can't achieve that quicker. where we can achieve that quicker councillor Lamb, we're absolutely committed to doing that, you know, that is our ambition and we will do our very best to do that. But again, we've got to be transparent, we've got to be, you know, honest about the position within the report and that's what we've done.
Thank you. Councillor Hayden, please.
Just a note on the word withdrawal. We're not withdrawing any and there is a very clear commitment to continue the FFI funding until the phasing of is complete. So any child receiving FFI funding will not have that funding withdrawn until the EHCP process is complete for them. So, which may mean they don't receive an EHCP in some circumstances, but until that process is complete, no funding is being withdrawn. And I think that's really important as we change overall, we phase out FFI to having wholly EHCP process, then I think that's a really fundamental point because we're dealing with staff and schools and parents as well as the children themselves that would be nervous around this. So nothing is being withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, just I totally understand that councillor Hayden. The point is that there will be children who are going to have a longer wait than they should have significantly in some cases for an EHCP, that currently don't have FFI funding and previously that would have helped them and their school going forwards. That's the point I'm making, that we're going to have a gap where there are people that need a level of support that don't get it.
Councillor Hayden, please.
I completely understand that and that was the benefit, the huge benefit of FFI. And, you know, being, it's, so the new cases coming in with EHCP, there will be that 20-week wait and that was one of the huge benefits of FFI, which we don't get with the EHCP. So even if it's done within the timescale, it will be 20 weeks anyway. So, because that's the legal limit for, it can't be less than 20 weeks with an EHCP. So I completely get that as somebody whose nephew received FFI before, you know, getting his EHCP, I completely understand that frustration, but that's the statutory framework that we are working in.
Thank you. Is it Julie or Dan wants to come in, please?
I'll come in first and then if Dan wants to come in after, if he can. I suppose just to say that again, as a city, we're absolutely committed to a focus on early intervention and prevention and we continue to work with our school settings, our early year settings around supporting children who do have emerging need. There's a range of support, you know, and again available to schools and we continue to have those conversations with school leaders in the city to ensure that we are working as a partnership to ensure that those children are receiving the support that they need and the schools receiving the resources that they need. And that's an ongoing active conversation, as you would expect.
Dan, please.
Thank you. It was really just to follow up on the point there, that the reason we're even having the conversation about FFI and phasing the withdrawal of it over time is that because the package of support that was put in place through FFI wasn't subject to a statutory assessment, we're preventing access to the right type of assessment for children and so we have to make sure we make that change. I think the safeguards that we've put in place that councillor Hayden alluded to would absolutely mean that there's no child that's going to miss out who currently has a package of support. And any children who end up not being given or issued an EHCP following a robust assessment process will have, as they do everywhere else in the country according to the legislation, their needs met from within the notional funding of the school. And, you know, that puts us on a statutory footing and it's right and proper and we're very happy to support schools with how they do that as well.
Thank you. If there's no more comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page 193. I take everybody's happy with those recommendations. That's great. Thank you. On to item 12, please councillor Hayden.
Thank you, leader. So this report sets out the outcomes from the statutory notice for the proposals to expand Broomfield South Special Inclusion Learning Centre by 100 places as part of a school rebuild and the establishment of a permanent satellite site for post-16 provision. It follows a report I brought to the executive board in September that set out these proposals as part of plans to address increased demand for specialist learning places, especially in the south of the city, and to help reduce the number of children being placed in expensive external placements. The statutory notice period ran from the 2nd of October to the 30th of October 2024 and six responses were received. Four were in support of the proposals and there were two objections. In line with guidance, I considered these as executive member, together with the Chair of Children and Family Scrutiny Board, and it was unanimously agreed at the meeting scrutiny board that as planning and highways matters, it would be appropriate for these to be addressed through the planning process. I'll leave it there.
Are there any comments on this paper? Therefore, I take it everybody is happy with the recommendations? That's great. Thanks councillor Hayden. We're on to the items under my portfolio, which is the proposed budget for 2526 and then the provisional budgets for 2627, 2728 and the revenue savings proposals for 2526 to 2728. These are going out to consultation customarily. We save discussion of these until we get to the budget for council meeting in the new year. So with that, I won't say any more on introduction and see if there are any questions or comments. Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, thank you. For the benefit of people, I'm sure there are millions watching around the world, I think it's worth, the decision today is not to take these decisions, it's about putting things out to consultation and seeing what the people of Leeds think about them. And the convention is that we would normally save very little and reserve our position at this stage. I certainly will be reserving my position and when it comes to the February meeting, we'll be setting out the alternative ways we think savings could be made and different priorities. But I think there are a couple of important questions to ask today actually, particularly around adult social care and the impact on our social care providers. So the questions raised from me are around what impact assessments have been done about the impact of national insurance contributions, increase in national living wage, what are the potential implications and is that fully captured within the budget? For instance, we have heard all directly from the care providers in the city that many expect if nothing changes from the plans at the moment, many will leave the sector and the pressure will revert to the council to figure out what to do. And I'm not clear that that's been captured in here. And again, it's another important, there's been lots of criticism for 14 years of the previous government not grasping the nettle and fixing social care. Some things were done, some positive things, not enough, but again, it's notable fixing social care is not a mission or priority of the new government. So again, while many were probably hoping they would ride to the rescue, they're not. We're on our own. How are we going to fix it and have we properly captured the potential implications within the budget papers?
Thank you. I don't think fixing social care in its entirety is in these budget papers, but I do think the other questions you asked, valid questions. Caroline, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Lamb for your question. Just to confirm and clarify that the position around fees for providers hasn't currently been incorporated in the exec board papers, that those decisions haven't been fully made yet. What we have alluded to is a fee review of, to the sum of 1.99 million pounds and that is specifically in relation to an element of fee that we pay for home care providers. We pay home care providers a rate which allows them to pay their staff real living wage, but over the last three years, we have also allocated an additional 40p an hour to providers and we did that following quite considerable pressures in the market as a result of Covid. The market has now very much stabilized and we've got really good capacity, good hospital flow and a lot of providers who are willing to operate home care services. So we're looking to remove that 40p premium payment that would still enable us to be paying providers at a rate which is very much comparable to the region, certainly not by any means low, we're middle ranging. We also know that members have ongoing commitment around passing on the real living wage to providers, to regulated service providers, home care, care homes, supported living providers. What we haven't yet considered and therefore it's not captured in the December exec report is the implications of the employers' national insurance contributions, those changes. We know that that provides an additional cost pressure to the council of approximately 10 million pounds. We haven't yet determined how that cost pressure is going to be met. I don't know if Victoria wants to add any more about that particular point, but I'll come back to any other questions if you want to follow up.
So just on that point, there's a lot of discussions and negotiations going on at the moment. We're in discussions with other core cities and West Yorkshire authorities around what will we do about the national insurance contribution for providers if it's not funded? And as part of those then negotiations that we have with the providers, it will have to be taken into account. At this point, as Caroline said, we haven't made any provision for that estimated additional cost of 10 million, but we will need to do that assessment over the winter before we get to February executive board around what that will look like and how much of that the council would fund and how much providers will need to absorb. But those discussions need to happen and they haven't done yet.
Thank you. Councillor Lamb, please.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think the principal point, if I've understood correctly, is this position could get worse and probably in likelihood will get worse in terms of the financial position.
Thank you. Caroline, please.
Absolutely recognize that this is a case, it is a case as you'll appreciate nationally. We are working through the Association of Directors of Adult Social Services with National Care Provider Forum and locally we're working with our own Leeds Care Association to understand where the biggest risks and challenges and difficulties are likely to be so that we can put the necessary mitigating action in place. But I absolutely acknowledge the point you make that it is getting more and more difficult for the care market.
Thank you, Caroline. If there's no more comments, I note councillor Lamb indicating he would reserve his position as opposition groups always do at this point, so I'll turn to the recommendations both on page 238 and 312 and take it everybody is happy with those. That's great, thank you. We'll move on to councillor Cooper's papers, please.
Thank you, leader. And back to the current year and the financial health monitoring report for this year, month seven's iteration of that. We are reporting an overspend, a projected overspend of 20.7 million this month. The housing revenue account is reporting a balanced budget, balanced position by the end of the year. A couple of things really just to mention for exec board members. The dedicated schools grant is now also in a challenging position and forecasting a 15.1 million pounds overspend estimated at the end of the year as well. We are keeping tight controls on any spend that the organization is undertaking and in terms of freeze on recruitment and tight controls on agency and other things that I've reported previously to executive board. So yes, the other thing to note is that the pay awards are now showing within the directorate's dashboards when members want to go and have a look at those and that the J and C pay award will be coming out in the December payroll. I'll leave it for questions there, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this paper? Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So obviously the last paper was looking forwards, this is looking backwards and it's apparent that in adults' social care and children's services, we are not going to meet the required funding savings for the year ahead. I think it's quite right, the way it's been presented, because reserves are already having to be brought in to look at how we can deliver a balanced budget. I think it's absolutely right that we don't use that to mask where the problem is because that doesn't help us solve it. I actually treat myself, children's and adults slightly differently because in recent years, adults have been very good at balancing their budgets and coming in on time and I think there's, obviously this year's position is concerning, but I do have confidence that they will get on top of it and figure out how to deal with it. Coming back to the previous discussion, I would like to know what conversations we're having with the health service about helping to tackle this issue and overspend because a big part of the problem, as I understand, we don't pay enough really to care providers to cover their costs. So if I've got the maths correct, correct me if I'm using simple numbers to be in the ballpark, but it costs a social care provider about 900 pounds a week to provide care and we pay about 684 pounds a week. So from somewhere that has to be subsidized. At the same time, there are 250 people in hospital beds every night that don't need to be, but there's somewhere, there isn't somewhere for them to be discharged and the cost of that is 3,000 pounds a week per patient. And you can quickly see a solution there where there's a saving for the NHS that frees up beds and space and capacity to treat more people and make them a saving and help to tackle this problem. So it's how do we join those dots? And my other challenge separately then is how do we have the confidence that children's services are going to address their budget challenge? They're clearly not going to meet it for this year. I've been on this council for 18 years. I can think of maybe once that children's services delivered a balanced budget in that time, maybe once. What confidence can we have, given history tells us that they simply will not deliver? And while they're quite right about the demand-led pressures and things like that, I think there is a mindset issue in that department that needs addressing to properly get on top of this because we're not doing the right service to children because we're having to make bad decisions by not managing our budget.
Thank you. I'll ask Caroline and then Julie to come in. Caroline, please.
Thank you. With regards to our discussions with the NHS organizations in Leeds, we are absolutely having regular discussions with them around all sorts of cost pressures, including all of the individuals that are jointly funded or funded entirely by continuing health as well. We have got an integrated commissioning service that is based within the council. The NHS puts funding towards that integrated team. Our deputy director is jointly funded by the Leeds ICB. So we do a lot of the work with our market of providers in a joint way. We've also absolutely made the point that you've raised around the impact is financially of considerable value to the NHS if we support a fluid and flexible and viable market of care providers. And hence historically, we have actually received quite a bit of funding jointly from the ICB to support just that, the development of the market. And this includes for people with working age adults, people with learning disabilities, complex mental health needs, where we know that the costs are particularly high. What we've signaled around the latest pressures around employers' national insurance contribution is also exactly the same, that this is going to be posing quite a risk to the market. They have, the NHS have escalated that as a risk in terms of their own risk log. We are working together with the ICB and Leeds Teaching Hospitals Trust, LTHT. We are working together with the ICB and the Leeds Teaching Hospitals Trust, LTHT, around the Home First Programme, exactly on the point of ensuring that people are not delayed in a hospital bed when they're ready for discharge but can't be discharged because there isn't any care home or home care capacity. And that work is proving really financially beneficial to all organisations, the different NHS organisations, as well as the councils, adults and health directorate. And we can see that that's releasing some of the pressures. So they can see the benefit of funding some of that social care pressure as well, because they see the benefit in terms of people not then having to attend A and E and get admitted into hospital. So that work is happening quite robustly.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Thank you, Leader. I suppose I just want to start off again by reiterating that currently, we have got a broken system in relation to children's external residential placements, and that has been acknowledged, it's been acknowledged nationally. The government have issued their own policy statement, policy document, which is keeping children safe, helping families thrive, and that's a precursor to what will be the new Children's Wellbeing Bill, which is to tackle the very issues which are contributing to the challenges that we have in Leeds, as do every other local authority. I think just to perhaps give some context to that, you know, so between 1990, around 1990, the average cost of an external residential placement was between £800 and £1,400 a week. If those costs had risen in line with inflation, we would expect those costs currently in 2024 to be between £1,950 and £3,400 a week. The reality that we have is that those weekly costs, on average, are currently £6.7,000, £6,500 a week. So it's more than double, around double what would have been expected, and that's the average cost. You know, we have many children in the city, as do other local authorities, who have the most complex needs, who are in placements which cost, you know, way beyond £6,500 a week. Again, you know, analysis in some of the most recent national documents that have been shared around this particular issue, you know, suggest that the spend in terms of children's social care could grow by as much as £8.4 billion by 2030. And that's an increase in expenditure of 65.8%. So this is a national issue that we are doing our very best to respond to in Leeds. In terms of confidence, you know, I think there's been obviously an awful lot of work, you know, day in, day night, which is focused on the challenges that we have got. But we are here to ensure that we are providing effective help and protection to the children and families of Leeds. We're here to make sure that our practice and our decision-making is ensuring that those children are safe and that we are giving them the support as a child-friendly city, the support that they need. We have seen a reduction of 75 children in our children looked after population since May this year. When I'm talking to other local authorities, you know, they find that quite incredulous, really. You know, that is a 4.8% reduction. We haven't had a children looked after population which has been under 1,500 since July last year. We're currently just beneath that. When I have those conversations with other core cities and other local authorities, you know, they are asking, how are we doing that? The fact that, you know, all of the work that's been gone on in relation to increasing our in-house foster carer resource, in September, we saw around 60 expressions of interest from new prospective foster carers. That was followed up in October by around the same amount. In September, that translated to around 11 formal assessments being taken forward for prospective new foster carers. I was with a core city last week, they were asking us, how are you doing that? Because, you know, that's not our experience. We've currently got four new children's homes operating in the city. I'm speaking to other local authorities, they're talking about the challenges of opening one children's home within two years. We are looking at doubling our in-house provision. The children, you know, our reunification team, which is a new team, has been able to return, you know, five children from external residential placements back to Leeds. We want our Leeds children to be back in Leeds, back with their family, back with their communities, back in education in Leeds. We've been able to return five of those children, you know, that's achieved around 1.2 million savings since August alone. We've got four children currently in four of our new small group living homes, again, family environments, giving children a loving, nurturing family environment, and with a saving of approximately £40,000 a week. So I sit here with humility, because we've got a broken system, we've got, as a core city, some unprecedented challenges. This is my 40th year of working with children and families, and I've never experienced anything like it. But we've got a committed workforce, we've got a committed partnership, we retain our ambition for children. I was out at the Compton Centre this morning, cross corporate working, partnership with Nestor, and installations of play equipment for children in Hay Hills and surrounding areas, focusing on speech and language, focusing on, you know, recognising if a child can read, if a child can communicate how they're feeling, that that is a determinant for all future outcomes. So we have got challenges, and we're not going to shy away from those, but we've got some green shirts, and that's down to the passionate dedication of the children, the colleagues in the directorate, but right across the partnership.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any more? Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, thank you. Just to follow up on that, Julie, there are many brilliant things going on in children's services, you know that and I know that, but my question is about budget management. And every year, you and your predecessors agree a budget that you believe, given the national context, the local context, all of the circumstances, you think is sufficient to deliver for the following year, and every year it turns out to be not enough, without exception, perhaps once in 18 years. And my question is, are you confident that what is in this budget for children's services next year is sufficient, and so therefore, when we get to month one, two and three, you are not going to be coming and reporting an overspend?
I think, as we've already said, and I think as, you know, colleagues around the table have discussed this afternoon, I think we have to get a balance and recognise the balance in terms of the local pressures that we have, you know, what's within our gift locally, the green shirts that we're seeing in terms of that sufficiency strategy and delivering good outcomes for children, but the fact that we're operating within a system which is demand and demography. And that's why I started by saying, at the end of the day, we have to provide effective help and protection to children, and that's got to be our first and foremost statutory responsibility, you know. And in response to your question, councillor Lamb, we are doing everything we possibly can, as we have done, as we will continue to do, to ensure that we, you know, we come within the budget. But the demand and the demography and the broken system is the reality of the context within which we're working, and we can't shy away from that or ignore that.
Thank you. Mariana, please.
Yeah, I think just to add to what Caroline and Julie have said, I think from all the directors' perspective, each director and directorate have got quite significant challenges because of, you know, what's been described in one there in terms of the societal challenges that are being faced. But, you know, I'm confident that everybody is doing everything they can. You know, our messaging and engagement on spend and recruitment and the rigor that we're following that through with, I don't hear that being, you know, kind of elsewhere, because we are taking it really seriously and members have been really supportive and rightly challenging as well. We have some pretty robust discussions with director to director, challenging each other because, you know, that's the right thing to do, it's public money, and we're all about improving outcomes. And in terms of, you know, Julie and children and families, but also other areas, we've tried to make sure we're lending absolutely the right level of corporate support and challenge to those areas where, you know, we've all been frustrated that the pace hasn't been quicker, but as Julie said, you know, everybody is going absolutely as fast as they can to deliver those improvements that are intended. And we've, you know, described what those arrangements are previously with the task and finish group that Victoria's been driving, the member oversight, et cetera, and the delivery board. So, you know, from my point of view, an absolute reassurance, and I know that Edward, you know, is keen to kind of pick up this baton and keep running with it for the organisation as a whole to get as close to budget as we possibly can in year and, you know, straight from the start of 2025, 2026. Thanks, Lady.
Thank you. If there's no more, councillor Cooper, please.
Thank you, Chair, for just allowing me to cover some of the many points that have been made during that item. And just to say, and to give my thanks to Julie and all the teams that are working in children's for the work that they're undertaking at the moment in really difficult, challenging circumstances, you know, huge thank you for what you're actually achieving. I think without us achieving that progress and that change and how you've been delivering that for us as an organisation, we'd have been in a lot worse financial position and would have been reporting a bigger overspend within year if we hadn't have had all of those progress, those changes, and those benefits to the children that belong here in Leeds and that need those improvements in their lives and in their families. It brings about not just financial benefit, but great benefit to those children and families as well. So thank you. Please pass that on to all the teams that I know you talk to on a regular basis, Julie. I think in terms of the budget management, just to give some reassurance to executive board, that we're working across the council now in a different way than we have done previously, both at, you know, directorate level, but also in terms of exec board members and their directors, and also across directorates with exec board members as well. I have oversight of quite a number of them. And the rigor and the robustness that those conversations entail and the detail that we go into in them really does bring about some kind of changes in how things are happening with all directorates, I have to say, and some good suggestions, some good conversations, some shared good practice that's working elsewhere, that may well work in that directorate as well. And it is paying dividends. I know we're still reporting an overspend, but as has been said by the experts in social care, who are dealing with a broken system at the moment, that actually here in Leeds, we're making a difference that other cities aren't able to do. And so I'm really pleased that we're able to still do that here in Leeds while we await further progress nationally that we know that we all want to see. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 366. I take it everybody is happy with those recommendations. Thank you. We'll move on to the last item. Councillor Prior's paper, please.
Thank you, Leader. So this is the Leeds Inclusive Growth Strategy, 2023 to 2030, one year on. So this report updates executive board on the progress the city have made in delivering inclusive growth since the publication of the original report just over a year ago. The strategy aims to ensure that the future of the city is more inclusive, healthier and greener, and that everyone living in Leeds can have the opportunity to flourish. It's divided into three themes, that's people, place and productivity. And the report provides a brief update to the board on the significant progress already made within these themes, highlighting a number of projects. The report also responds to the November full council white paper resolution, which was supporting the government's new employment rights bill. I shall leave it there for introductory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councillor Lamb, please.
Yeah, few questions, please. First of all, have we assessed what the broader impact of the pulling of the funding for British Library North will have on the schemes in that area and the wider impact on the economy? And are there any updates on how we're going to address that? And the second question is, within the report, it talks quite glowingly about our improvements in productivity in the area. Earlier this week, and well, tomorrow is the Board of the West Yorkshire Combined Authority, and in getting briefed for that, one of the key points they were very keen to make and will be making tomorrow is that there is a huge productivity gap that we're not addressing. So they can't both be right. So are we right or are the combined authority right? And what's the plan to address that productivity gap?
Councillor Prior, please.
I'll just come back briefly on productivity and then pass over for British Library. So improving productivity is an ongoing mission, it's an ongoing work we're doing. I was really proud that Leeds City Council, our employment and skilled service has been found outstanding, we're the only city in the UK for that to be the case. And it's with that team that we'll be able to tackle that, to make sure as the city grows, we're able to take everyone with us. So it's an ongoing process where we're seeing improvements over time, but that's not to say there's not a lot of work to do.
Thank you. Angela, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm about the funding, the proposed funding for British Library North. The government is currently going through a review, and we will be submitting our call for evidence this week, if not tomorrow, in terms of the review of the £10 million for British Library North and the £5 million for the National Poetry Centre, which was a previous commitment from the levelling up fund. So at the minute, there is no confirmation on whether that funding is a secured or lost, it is just a call for evidence and a review.
Thank you. And we're saying on the British Library that £25 million in the West Yorkshire Devolution deal is still very much, very much in place. Okay, if there's no further comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page 415. I take it everybody is happy with those. That's great. Thank you. And I will close the public part of the meeting. Thank you, everybody.